This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is April 18th, 2023, and I'm calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board at a couple of minutes after 6:00. Could we start by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So. Do we have anybody here for open time for the public? Yes, Robert.
Robert Floyd, College Highway, speaking as town moderator. Last week you indicated you probably would be meeting Thursday to 20th.
Yeah.
So I went ahead and canceled the town moderator information article session, and it's now Monday to 24th.
Okay.
7:00. Cheers.
Thanks. Okay. So we have no public hearings or presentations or reports to the Select Board tonight, so let's just go right into new business. I think Joy is coming. She might be a little bit late, but we'll get started without her. Let's see. Now, I had... So the one I have on my screen here, hold on, was the job description for the COA Director on the Agenda Ed, I believe. It's not on the printed one, but I thought I had it on the on-screen one. It's one of the first new business ones. Or we can wait until Joy comes, or she's the liaison to COA, right?
I am.
Oh, you are? I'm sorry. Apologies. Here liaison to so many things. Never mind. Joy.
Joy is the Chair of the Search Committee.
Oh, there we go. I knew there was some connection there.
Yes.
I'm blanking it out.
I thought we had added it. I don't see it.
Yeah, I think, uh, hold on. No, I'm sure. Just a second. Let me just check.
Did it come with the documents today?
This would have been the one that came today, but I'm trying to...
Let me just double-check my town.
I thought there was a version two that got posted, so.
Yeah, I think.
Let me go, uh, I can't go look.
I'm just looking at my town government. If it's there, we'll pick it up right now.
For which one, Chris?
The COA job description. Uh, they, I think it was just a request to come to us. Hold on a minute. It's not on the printed version for some reason, but...
I guess I had problems all day long with calling files and other files.
So, New Business Action Discussion, COA Director Job Posting and Job Description.
Yeah.
So let's pick that up first. I think that had come into us at some point. Let me find it. Yeah. So my understanding is this was just a preliminary, and I'll turn it over to Renee in a second, but this was just a preliminary look at the job description for the future COA Director, replacement to Joan, and getting an idea of just our general okay with the qualifications and salary, so that it could then go to PQB to do the normal process for a PRF, et cetera, I think. So Renee, let me turn it over to you.
I think you need to be turning it over to Joy, because if they already met, that was one of the parts of the charge, was to review the job description, and that's not something that I did. This is the first time I'm seeing it.
Okay.
Seeing this.
Well, then, let's...
Okay. I can speak to some, but I'd rather wait.
Okay.
So that's Joy and I could put the whole.
And where, what documents was this in? Because a lot, a number of things came out today, and I'm opening up one of them. It's not in there.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, it might have just been...
You have the posting.
Might not have been copied. I had an email from Janet, I believe, who sent to Ed and myself. So maybe, yeah, maybe it was only an email. Hmm, helpful.
The posting or the description?
The description. That. Nobody has a copy of that, apparently.
I don't have a copy of that.
It's the posting.
Hey, let me go cut it.
But it's not posted yet.
No, I know.
Yeah.
This is all written on. I'm sorry.
Why don't you just send that to me? Can you just send that to me?
Yeah, let me just send you the email. Hang on.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the, and then the PRF as well?
None of that got to that point yet, I didn't think, unless they've done this.
No, it hasn't.
Okay. So I...
No, it was a...
It hasn't.
I think I remember seeing the email as the posting.
Right. Uh, hold on a second. Okay. So, is it to Renee? Okay. Just send it off. Sorry, guys. But we can, we can circle back around when Joy gets here and...
And if she doesn't...
I just come back to it?
I'll do it.
I guess we ought to, if she's been the liaison being involved in this, unless... Francine, you've got...
Well, she's also chairing the job search, the candidate search committee.
All right.
And we met last week, and we put this together as a, as a committee. We made revisions to this job posting.
Okay.
And then, I mean, we can certainly, if you...
Speak in your mic, so we hear.
Oh. So anyway, if you prefer, we can go ahead, or we could, we could see if Joy's coming or not.
I haven't heard whether she's not coming. I'm assuming she is, but we could, um, let's, let's jump down into some other articles, items on the agenda first, and then come back to this, okay?
All right.
All right. So I will come back to that. Estimated revenues.
Sorry.
Yikes.
Even when this is on silent, it runs, it goes through my computer, unfortunately.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna get started here. All righty. Let's go to the FY '24 estimated revenues. Ed, you just sent us something relatively new, I believe, on the email.
No, it's the same, it's same as last week on the revenues. So estimated revenues are, and this is going by the Governor's Budget, nineteen million, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, eighty dollars and forty-seven cents. And the House Ways and Means has come out with a budget proposal that's a little less than that. They haven't finished their process yet, and we still have the Senate and then the compromise version to go.
So are we...
And I will say that in my 23 years of doing this, I only remember the Governor's Budget being the higher, highest of the four in one particular year. And I'm trying to remember, it was either 2003 or 2000, I think, 2008, and I believe it was 2003. There was a lot of discrepancy between the Governor's proposal and the House and the Senate due to the effects after 9/11.
Yeah. Okay. So you're comfortable recommending that we stick with this 19872080 as the estimated revenue, revenue with the hope that it might go up after Conference Committee?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I can't believe that they would cut unrestricted government aid.
I know. I can't even believe that either.
Any lower than they've already proposed it, because actually, from what, even what the Governor proposed from unrestricted aid, we should be getting more.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions about that? Is that...
No. We're at 19872080?
Correct. So that's...
And the, the school figures is still, because that, that did go up. That's, but that's no different from what the last figure we had on that?
It went up a little bit. I think it was like, if my memory's correct, like, around $10,000. But that would affect the, the local school and not necessarily us.
It's on low on battery. Do you have an outlet? You have an outlet to your phone? I mean, to your computer?
No, not just that.
All right. You can take mine out of there. It's on the top one. I'll charge my phone, my computer where I can. Excuse me. Okay. So we're okay with revenue? Let's go right into the budget and budget requests. Joy, welcome. We're gonna come back around to the COA Director after we go through this, okay?
Unless you want me to...
The COA job description. If you can reach that, that'd be great. All right. So with the... So what we have is the 24 department budgets, version two, I believe, that Ed sent around. Is that right, Ed?
That is correct.
That we're working on?
Yes.
So give us the, the lowdown on what we're looking at here, then.
This, uh, has the updates to it of taking what were the estimated wage increases if we followed the, uh, the model created last year and moved everyone a step. So those have been implemented here, and right now, with that input, we have a deficit of expenses over revenues of nineteen thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and seventy cents.
No. Bradley had said that he was just gonna add the figure in the bottom. Were they, was that, is that what was done?
No.
They were actually added to the lines?
With this one, it's actually added to the lines.
Okay.
And just as an example, if I go into the accountant, uh, specific worksheet, you will see the accountant's salary and the assistant accountant wages. They are now, you know, pinky-purply coated. That is after we made those updates. We coded them with that color to make sure that they, each one and everyone had been done.
Ed, can I just ask you? So is, is the year-to-year change incorporate that purple figure, or is that based on some previous number?
That incorporates this change.
Okay.
Yeah. So in, in this particular example, you could, would see that the town accountant's salary would increase one thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. And this one will be an anomaly, because we have a new person in the position. But in the case of the assistant accountant wages, there was actually a decrease of one thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Is there a separate spreadsheet that actually has percentages somewhere?
No.
No?
Not percentages. You've got the actual wage sheet in here, I think.
I'm just curious to know what percent change it is.
It can vary.
Up to 12, right?
No. In this particular case, I was given, we were given one direction, move them a step.
Okay.
Okay. The two anomalies, low and high, are gonna be two and a half and four and a half. The mean is gonna be around 4%.
Okay.
So, uh, if we go back to the totals column, like I say, this incorporates all those departmental wage changes. I will say, if you see that orange color, much like on my own salary or the town, let's just say town administrator salaries, uh, and there's a couple of other ones, I believe, or at least one other one, uh, we use the same color.
Did you check into the technology equipment?
And I did not get a chance to do that. That probably could be decreased a little bit.
Okay. So tell us what these mean.
So, like, the administrat, this orange color and the salaries for, like, the administrative, in this case, it's the administrative aid, which would be shared between police and fire. Those have not been changed and are level funded. And the other one should be, if I can find it, on the fire chief.
There it is.
That one didn't get colored. So, let me just do... Oh, come on. There.
So, does that mean a caution, or what does that mean?
It's just means that they're level funded. Their contracts have come to an end, and, and personally, I'm happy level funding mine. But the, the other one is there, because the fire chief's contract is over. He's, he's retiring. He'll be negotiating with a new fire EMS chief. I did not know what the Select Board was thinking in that, or wanted to do in that particular case.
Ed, can you scroll down to the bottom there, please?
Yep.
I'm not sure what to say about the fire chief, but what I will say is, don't forget, we added EMD responsibilities to that salary. Where before, it was separate.
Right.
It zeroed out as EM is separate now. So...
And that's request two. I want request one.
There it is.
That's what you want, right, John?
So right, right, we have a shortfall of nineteen...
Nineteen thousand six is our shortfall.
Six twelve.
And if you wanted to see what those new wages and salaries are, some of them are grouped together, I can go through the individual tabs and show you.
So I would like to start with focusing in on the Fire Department. If, if we're looking for a direction on where to go. I think, so I, I've already made changes to my spreadsheet that I have. But I think a new fire chief coming in, I, I think we could put the base pay at a hundred thousand. I know it's level funded, but a hundred there. And then, um, the, their budget two request for EMT standby was $2,000, which tells me, and if I remember right, that was a transfer line item that seldom used anymore. So make that $2,000.
Can you just repeat what you just said, John?
The EMT standby.
Yeah. You said you remember them saying what?
That Chief Workman said historically, they don't use that anymore, and that's available funds that he transfers amongst his department as needed.
Okay.
So since he's got it over in his budget two request, make that the budget one number of 2,000. So we'd save 1,500 on the wage. You know, again, successful negotiations, but more than likely, you know, we're paying our current chief 101, and that's someone that's been in the position for X number of years. This person coming in probably is not gonna be an existing chief. I think 100,000, you know, again, illustration purposes. This assumes they start on July 1st.
Yeah.
We already have a plan that we know, we don't believe this person's gonna start until August or September. So the 100 may still be a valuable number if we're only talking about a 10-month period.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Are we, right now, trying to narrow the nineteen thousand dollar? Or are we thinking that, one way or another, we're gonna end up with an override for, for emergency services?
That's what I'm thinking, which is why I'm thinking we find the nineteen thousand dollar savings within the Fire Department.
And then put it into the override?
Correct.
Okay. So you're only coming up with the first line in the case?
What makes the budget work.
What makes the budget work?
And then we, whatever we cut in budget one, fire, we put in, we add it to budget two, fire, which then becomes part of the override.
Because I think one of the things we had been talking about was if we're gonna do the override, we wanted to keep it discreet and focused on EMS in particular.
Right.
Right.
Not mix it in with, you know, apples and oranges of every piece of every little department. So Francine, question?
So where is the expense for any interim person or anyone to conduct the assessment and so on and so forth?
I think we, I think we have to build it in.
Okay. So it's not in here yet?
No.
No, it'd be part of the override.
So that has to be, it is not part of the override yet?
Correct.
Okay.
And then I, I personally think the only other area, that line item that we need, that I would suggest we revisit, is the fiscal year '24 town administrators' compensation.
Okay.
But, so my thought is, all right, if we, if we have a shortfall of 19, can we find 19 within here, within budget one?
Yeah.
Move over to budget two. Assuming, I'm sorry, Chris.
No, go ahead.
Assuming that there's nothing anywhere else in the budget that could be paid for with ARPA funds.
Okay. And just for clarity of what, what we're seeing here, I just wanna be sure I understand. So Ed, the, the 101 is, is currently in there for the fire chief's salary. That's what's currently in your calculation.
That would be, yeah.
And then we have not built in the admin aid yet, right? In the total, it's in the wish list.
Not in budget one.
It would be in the override.
It would be in the override, and that would represent a total of 20,000, or it would end up being 40,000?
Twenty. And then what we should do is actually technically to show it in the override is change 10,000 in here and put an admin aid line into the Police Department at 10,000.
Oh, so you're talking about a total of only 20,000, so a part-time position.
Right.
10 and 10.
And that makes sense to distribute it the way it's being used.
At least to start out and see how it goes.
I thought that's kind of what the Select Board gave us the direction of last week.
And then that time...
But I think it was my recommendation.
Yeah. And then, so back on, John, you're, you're thinking about the EMT standby. You're proposing we keep the...
Change, change that to 2,000.
And not the 6250?
Correct.
I see.
So that gives us another 4,200 there, and then the ambulance EMS expense line, reduce that to 50,000.
All right.
Those, those savings there then puts us in the, those three adjustments puts us in the positive.
So that would be...
So 50,000 in year budget one?
For EMS expenses.
Okay.
And the override stays at the 72941, which is where we believe it needs to be.
Okay.
So in my mind, budget one is working within the current amount of money we have, and budget two is the correction to the Fire Department slash ambulance service.
So why don't we just make that change now, then? Change that to 10,000 and, and highlight it in green for the, you know, police?
Well, I don't even know if there's a line item in there for police.
Right, for the override, yeah, yeah.
So we might, we might have to just leave it in here.
Right, right. It might be confusing.
Might have to hold it there for a minute, but...
Yeah. Let me just take a quick look at...
Because all these, all these back sheets roll up to the total, right, Ed?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So I would need to make a change on the...
Bradley controls the master, so I don't wanna mess it up.
So we probably, yeah, because the content wouldn't be enabled for us to make those changes.
Yeah, there is not a slot in here for that. So my suggestion would be leave it, leave it in there, and I'll ask Bradley to...
Add 10 to this one.
Take 10 from here and add a new line into the police...
Wages.
To cover that in budget two.
Okay.
Now I've lost fire.
That would be admin...
I can't spell.
John, what did you say was the total with those changes of savings on budget one?
It puts us to...
Positive.
To the positive of 1,521 dollars.
1,521 dollars.
To the positive. But that still leaves, in my mind, the town administrators' compensation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I also think there probably needs to be something, some line earmarked for this study at the Fire Department.
Right. That was the other thing. So that may be under, either under the Select Board expenses or somewhere, or some other place? Yeah?
Yeah. Which then I, so I, again, I'm just talking out of school, off the top of my head here. I think town administrators currently budget at about 86. If the thought process is that whether we were renewing a contract or not, we, the consensus was we thought it was gonna be around 100. That's 14,000 dollars there, plus six for the, uh, study at the Fire Department. It's 20, it's round numbers, but do we pull ARPA money, 20,000 for the consultant at the Health Department, just to make it all work within this year's budget?
And the other expense that's still not in here that we're gonna need in budget year one, if we don't do the recruiting ourselves, and I saw the material you sent, and the low ball to hire some firm to help do the recruiting and...
So we put that in?
We put in 6,500. We have 6,500 in there.
Yeah, five, 5,000 for the, 1,200 for advertising.
There were, there were some other estimates that were higher than that.
Yeah, the number that I saw was, was almost 10,000 dollars.
And I don't think we have to go in that total direction myself. I think we could find, you know, recruiting. So assuming that, you know, we are, I mean, we haven't, I guess we haven't formally said, but Ed is aiming toward retirement, so we've got some money in there.
I don't know if it's retirement, or he's just done working with us.
Maybe retired, retired of us.
Retirement.
So we have put in 6,500 under the Select Board line for some, some recruiting for an outside firm. I think we did, anyway. Where'd it go? Now, did we pull that back into the master budget, though? Let's be sure we did, because I've got minutes in here.
Yes, but I will show you. Hang on a second.
Uh, I don't know which one I'm looking at from Bradley here. Hope this is right.
Yes.
Yep.
Right there, the 8,300.
Right. And that transferred up to the total budget? I hope. Maybe?
Yeah.
You gonna ask me that for every line?
No. I just wanna be sure. No, because I, as I'm looking on mine, and I don't think I can, I don't think I can manipulate.
Well, if you, if you don't trust that one, you don't trust any of them.
No, no, no. I don't think I can manipulate this one, so I don't know for sure.
So, let's say...
Yep. First line, 8,300.
Eighty-three is in there. Okay. All right. So that's there. Okay.
His salary is only at 84, not 86, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So can, can you make those couple of changes that John was talking about, or not?
I can, I can repeat.
I'm only gonna make the changes that the Select Board votes on, because I don't wanna get in a place of changing something and going, oh, and you saying no, and then me going, oh my God, what was it originally?
But it's, you're, you can...
But I can.
You can? Okay. Because I don't wanna...
I have that ability.
I don't wanna do it on my spreadsheet. So, so the recommendation, let's go back to the Fire Department again. So the recommendation...
Would be, yeah.
Go ahead, John.
Fire, Fire Chief's salary, budget one, to be changed to 100,000 even.
Okay.
And then the EMT standby, be changed to 2,000 dollars, the same as wishlist two. And again, I'm, I'm going off the assumption that wishlist two is what is believed is really needed to run the department. And then ambulance EMS expenses reduced to 50,000, which then puts us in the positive by 1,500. All those cuts are retained in the, in the override portion.
So let's let Ed catch up. Can you, you, you can't make those on here, then? Right now?
I can. I'm risk averse, so...
So we have that, before we go on to another...
If you vote that, I will change them.
No, before we go on to another topic, before, let's stay on the Fire Department.
I'll make a motion to change the existing budget one police chief to 100,000.
Fire chief.
Fire chief to 100,000, EMT standby to 2,000, ambulance expense to 50,000.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So...
So let's see what that really does give us. So let's see what that really does give us.
1521, right?
100,000.
Here comes two.
2,000.
And maybe just
Correct?
Yeah, you might want to just highlight those two, so Bradley knows we've made those changes when he looks at it.
I knew. I just got to figure out a different color.
Or highlight their titles, so you don't change that orange, you know?
There. It looked more orange on the
Yeah, 2,000, that one. And that one, and then
There, and then just to check.
The other motion was to, we didn't make it, but we talked about, should we move over the 20,000, so it shows up in the total right now?
Well, right now, this total should show us 1,500 to the good.
Okay, well, let's see what the total is, then.
And it shows that we are $1,521.95 to the good.
Okay.
So again, I say if we take the TA and move it from 84 to 100, whatever that mathematic number needs to be.
Yeah.
Let's us right back in the hole.
Well
I know, I know, I know.
And then we have to find 10?
So make that an even 100,000, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Now we have to find one that.
So now we're at 13,000.
So that would add 15,000, which then puts us 14,000 in the hole.
Right.
We add six, it's going to be a little less than six, because we want to get to the magic number of 20,000 in the hole, so that we then allocate ARPA funds for the health department consultant.
So we have, yeah, while you're doing that, let me just pull up my ARPA.
He's going to wait for a motion.
Yep.
Did we
Does anybody disagree with that logic? I don't, and the way I, the reason I say that, I don't know of another line item within our budget that we could just easily say, oh yeah, that's ARPA, that could be funded by ARPA.
Okay, and so what line are you suggesting that
Consultant for the, that's currently doing the inspection.
That's still currently in the budget under here?
Yes.
Okay, so instead of funding it in the operationals, being funded under ARPA?
So we'll get to that in a second, so let's have the motion to modify
Motion to adjust the town administrator's salary budget one to an even 100,000.
Oh, second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Didn't hear any? Okay, so let's see if that gets us somewhere.
Did you go through all the different lines? Was there anything that was a one-time, one-timer?
Well, there's that stormwater that we did last year.
Right, that's not going to be a one-timer.
Right.
Right.
Is there anything else that was
I think out of the fire department, it would be, wouldn't it be like the turnout gear, well, it's not really, it's kind of recurring in a way, we do it every year.
It's recurring, yeah.
That's true. So we're down 13, okay. So, could you just jump to the board of health and let's see where that inspection service is in there?
That should be outside the general fund, though. Oh, I'm sorry, nevermind, nevermind. I thought you were
So it was the
For board of health expenses, which has them combined right now, until we get to the end where we can separate them out without messing up the flow, there was $3,000 in regular health department expenses, and this would reflect $6,195.94 For, for a vendor to do the health agent's work, when we don't have a health agent, and then I will remind the select board that there's another $10,000 that was encumbered for this year that would be eligible for 24 to add to that, so Actually, between the two, the operating and the ARPA, there would be $16,195.94 available to pay a vendor to perform health agent duties.
Right, so that's possibly not going to work, under the tech services line of town hall, are any of that, any of the 29,000 that's in there, are, is any of that one-time things related to COVID or ARPA where we're doing upgrades, and it's one-time hits?
No. If you wanted to take a couple thousand out of the equipment line item, you could.
Just under the townwide budget, or?
Townwide, yes.
And the enhancement in the webpage maintenance?
Webpage maintenance is a straight fee.
But it's as a result of us enhancing the services related to COVID, though. I mean, granted, it's going to be reoccurring.
Yes.
Yeah.
But the reason we did the upgrade and incurred that expense was because of greater, a desire to have greater public input, or transparency, right, with the website?
Yes.
And we, we took that money out of ARPA to do the website conversion.
Yes, correct.
Is that what you're asking, John?
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, it's an increase of $2,250, I mean, we, you know, might be a little borrowing here, a little borrowing there to come up with the $20,000 deficit, to pull ARPA money in. Because if we use ARPA, we have to justify, and granted, eventually we have to pay the full boat of that price, but we potentially have two more fiscal years where we could say that added increase should be coming out of ARPA.
Don't we have some limits, though, in terms of ARPA being used to balance our budget? I mean, I know we took it as
We took it as a revenue loss.
Revenue loss.
And it has to be spent in this coming fiscal year?
It's got to be obligated by the end of December
Right.
24, and spent by December 26.
How much are we looking for? 14,000 something?
13 something? Yeah.
What about the Sharps program, 3,000? I mean, that's a regular one, but if you're looking for something that is at least
13,581,41.
Remove that into the, like, the public safety category for the override?
I was trying to keep an override clean, so people could understand it, without cutting in pace from three or four different departments.
I agree.
I really think, if we want something to have a chance of passing, we need to focus on one
Yeah, I would, I would try to leave it locked at fire EMS and police.
Yeah.
Ed, do you have a suggestion on closing that 14,000 gap?
We're just on some of these, but
What, what's the gap right now?
Almost 13,5.
13,581,41.
I know we talked about the turnout gear, and that's an annual expense of about $12,000, but for this year, could you put it into that other category? Would you? In terms of the, the
In the ARPA category, or the
Into the override.
Well, just keep in mind, if that doesn't pass, we don't want to, these things have to be
What about
Counted for in another way.
What, what is the difference between the current shortfall and $28,750?
How much?
28,750.
Is that what the technology is?
15,2, thereabouts.
No, I'm on
That's what the MS4 would be, correct?
Right, so whatever the difference is between those two numbers, that should be our placeholder for the consultant to help with the fire department under the select board wages, and then we fund the MS4 stormwater management out of ARPA.
Well, the only problem with that is if it has to be expended, we haven't even got the final bill yet for FY '23 from Ty and Vaughn, that's going to be a problem, we're going to have to try to get it by December.
True.
That would be $15,168.59. What are you trying to accomplish?
To zero it.
Yeah.
Huh?
To zero, so to move the stormwater to ARPA, which then puts us over, so whatever that difference of the override is becomes the placeholder under select board for the consultant for the fire department slash ambulance.
The MS4 is, is 28,750.
Correct.
My, my point was that we still haven't closed out this fiscal year because we don't have all the bills from Ty and Vaughn, so if this has to be spent, ARPA by December 2024?
No, obligated, obligated, committed by the
Spent by the end of 26.
Okay.
Spent by 20, 2026.
Then that would
So it's got to be obligated by 26, so, I mean, we could put it forward
Then it's not a problem.
On, on the, well, we could put it, yeah, we could put it under ARPA, I think we've got, we're going to be tight, depending on where we are, though, let's just not double-check that first. It would be easier to fit the turnout gear in there, and then if for some reason, or put the turnout gear, rather, in the override, and if the override didn't pass, we'd still have leeway to put it back into ARPA.
Yeah, I think that would be, I would support that better, I think.
I'm a little leery about
Yeah.
The stormwater one going in there.
Yeah. I don't think Randall is in, would be in support of that either, because I know he wasn't that happy when it came out of the operational stabilization. I think the turnout gear, that, you know, that way we'd know that it would be covered if the override didn't pass, would at least be able to get it out of ARPA.
We know we'd have another chance at it.
What's the total on that one?
Which?
The turnout gear.
12,000.
Well, that's just about it, we could probably find additional 1,000, right, maybe out of the webpage, the technology
Somewhere, somewhere.
That's what I, that's what I thought, I agree with you.
What do you think of that, Ed?
Because at least that would group all the fire stuff as one, like
Let me go back to fire and see where we are. You want to balance it? Three steps.
Really? How much?
Three steps. This 12,000.
You want to take up a collection here, we could just increase the revenue?
Technology equipment by two, you're at 14, and then reduce the $100,000 TA by 1,168.59, and you're balanced.
What was the second step?
Second step is reduce technology equipment from 8,300 to 6,300.
Okay, and the service you feel is pretty solid, that, that line is pretty solid, you could take the additional 1,000 out of that?
Or wouldn't we take it, no, we, I would suggest taking the 1,168.59 difference from the $100,000 town administrator's salary.
I'm suggesting it actually come out of
So it comes out like 28,900.
Technology services, not under the TA.
No, I would not touch services at all.
Okay, that's my question.
Yeah.
Well, does anybody else think about that? That would get us there? There's not too many other places that come to mind that could really do this, I don't think, if we tried to keep it within the fire focus. Or public safety focus.
Other than e-permitting software, that's new, right?
That's, that's all the building
Yeah, it's the building, that they've been utilizing for a number of years.
No, that's, yeah, that's there.
I thought it was the e-code.
Nope. That's not there. That's elsewhere, under Lucy's, I think. Okay, so that would mean the town administrator would be a tad shy of the 100,000. Okay. So if I hear that right, let me just repeat what I think I heard, so reduce technology equipment by 2,000 down to 6,300, move the turnout gear to ARPA for 12,000, and then reduce whatever that small difference is, about $1,168 or something, reduce the town administrator's salary down.
Yeah, $1,168.59.
Okay, I guess I'll make that as a motion, then, I'll make a motion to reduce the, I wrote down the amounts, but I didn't write it under what category, so I'll just put $12,000 under
ARPA, move turnout gear to ARPA.
The turnout gear to ARPA funds, the $2,000 under
Technology equipment, reduce it.
Technology equipment, and $1,168.59 on a TA salary.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion about that? Anybody? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who seconded that?
Francine.
Okay. So, let's see if I can do this right.
So I think, well, let's see where we get with that, I, I would still have one question, I think we're not quite there yet, but
Oh, nuts. Wrong salaries. Come on. Okay, and that. Come on. And then townwide. Is where to go.
Do we ask the chief to authorize our application? The turnout gear?
Need to, yeah. Just to keep the process.
Mm-hmm.
Come on.
A little bit above?
Yeah, where you go?
So I have one question, and that would be, one of the other items that we're going to pick up tonight is on the COA director, I think we budgeted that at 45,000, which I don't think we're going to find somebody for 45,000.
Well, I made the little change, it's not much different, but I, we did make, when we did the calculations, a little change to that.
Well, I think we addressed the increase in hours request to 32.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then that was like the
Yeah, it's a little bit
Middle of the range, because
It's a little bit more, 45, 127, 68.
45, 127, 68.
What does the posting say that we just did that?
What's that?
Range.
Yeah, I, I don't know the, the range for that grade, I think the, Francine, you have
Yeah, the, the range is, you know, for a 32-hour week, the range started at, depending upon the, the step of the scale, from $39,070 up to $64,577. And if it ended up a person with a lot more experience and on the higher end, there's, you know, that, that additional money could come from one of the grants.
Okay.
Over and above what we, what we
So 45 could be town money, and then if, if you needed another 5,000 or something, say, that could come from a grant?
It could come out. But we had to put in a competitive range.
Yeah. Okay.
So it's six more hours of work, salary increase.
And it went up by one step.
Six more hours, you said, right?
Six hour increase, from 26 to 32.
And that's what gets us to 45, thereabouts?
Mm-hmm.
And so this would be like on a step two, Ed, or something?
Right.
Nah, I think it's more than that, comes out at 27, 12, let me see if I can find what step that is.
It's step five, wait, no, I don't know what step it is.
What is that, the library and, the library was
Library's 49.
Just curious, curious to where it stands in terms of like, health and library, I know that there's a difference.
Step six, grade five, step six, $27.12.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the library director is
Is a step eight.
Yes, step six.
Okay.
Okay.
Grade five, step six, okay, okay, all right, so maybe we're somewhat covered there, okay. Anybody else have any other observations or questions? Anybody else have any other observations or questions about this? Are we there at this point?
I have feedback when we get to the override.
Okay. All right. Okay, so right now we're about fifteen hundred in the positive?
Um, fifteen eighty-seven, eighteen.
Why don't we return it right back to the town administrator?
Put it back on the town administrator?
Yeah, put it back, uh, put the hundred thousand back.
Take it back to, gotta get to zero somewhere, right?
Twelve? Yeah.
Put a couple pennies back where it belongs.
It's still slightly, then it would still be slightly under a hundred, but that's.
Yeah.
Close enough, but, okay.
Closer, all right.
Okay, so we took this back to Now it's four eighteen fifty-nine to the positive.
How about into the, uh, tech?
Well, wouldn't that four eighteen, I mean, I, we'd have to do the math, but we adjusted salaries. Wouldn't that just get absorbed into the FICA? Cause we increased salaries by twenty or forty thousand between the two positions.
Yeah.
You know, one point four, five percent.
Okay.
True.
Okay. So we're basically in the neighborhood. I mean, if, if you have a couple pennies, you and Bradley can move around, that's probably doable, okay? So let's take a look at what we're talking about for the override briefly. John, you were keeping some track of the figures there?
Well, so my take on the override, so now if we look at fire department budget two, the override is really coming down to the difference between the total of budget one and budget two, right?
Oh, and then the, uh, those couple of differences in the police department.
Uh, oh, the sixty thousand, or, or the way, yeah, cause the twenty, the admin's in here, but we also had, put in the two part-timers, the one full-time police officer, right?
Right.
Of some odd thousand.
Exactly. And, and then the, the other piece that isn't reflected in here yet would be figuring if we're adding two full-time EMT paramedics, that we would probably have to account for adding two, uh, health insurance policies.
Right, so excluding the police department, office, the patrol officers.
Yeah.
I, I went through that column of budget two and rounded those numbers. I know, don't make the change, but I just, starting at the top, I said, you know, the chief's pay would be one oh five. Then twenty thousand, two hundred thousand for fire department wages, thirty-five in expenses, five for truck maintenance, fifteen for building expenses, fifteen for the turnout gear. See, and I say fifteen for turnout gear because that's what we got from the state. They, they gave us fifteen this year in, uh, and I'm imagining it's a matching gift, but, um, six thousand for the IV pump. I know possibly that's gonna go through capital. Two thousand for standby, five hundred thousand for EMT wages, nine thousand for ambulance billing, twenty-five hundred to maintain our license and certifications in ambulance. Seventy-five thousand, rounding that number, seventy-five thousand for ambulance expenses, ten thousand for maintenance, got me to nine nine nine, five hundred, which is a difference two fifty-three. Then I added in the FICA for the change in wages, adds another two thousand, seven hundred, seventy-one dollars. And I added twenty-four thousand for, um, medical coverage for two employees. Maybe it's more than a thousand dollars a month, I don't know. But that got me to two eighty, plus then we add in the police department officer wages, and the override is looking to be about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so forty for the police.
Hmm, I, I thought the PD number was thirty-eight and change, but.
Well, if you're just rounding.
Not sure about that. I have a little bit more. I've got, if you go down column two, from the fire chief's salary all the way down to ambulance maintenance, that's about nine hundred and seventeen thousand, seven fifty. Right?
On the fire EMS, the difference in the two budgets was two hundred and four thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, and then that one down there was seven eighty-two, four oh three, so. Yeah, so just pull up the fire, fire department one, that's easier to see. I mean, that's.
So you got the difference between seven thirty-three, five eighteen, and nine thirty-seven, seven fifty. That's like two oh four, two hundred and forty dollars.
And that's putting in the twenty thousand there that, you know, hadn't been there, right? So.
So yeah, just to be clear, I changed the numbers in budget two.
Yeah. Um, how about just to have it, I don't know if it's, would, I don't wanna mess things up on going into the total though. I was just wondering if you could put in column G, which is empty, put in what John is suggesting, so we see that clearly, but it, just temporarily.
What is John suggesting?
Just, well, he just rounded everything up, so are we really at that?
Well.
That difference of the two thirteen?
Why round when you can just do equals that minus that? Two oh four, two thirty-two, twenty-four.
And then adding in the couple of police things you were mentioning.
So I would, I mean.
Are we missing something?
April showers, no, yeah. If, so G is the recommended one from the board of selectmen, right? That's what that column is?
G, uh.
So that becomes the over, the, well, basically, we're gonna present two budgets, budget A, budget B.
Mm-hmm.
Right, but I'm saying, are you, are you okay if I give you numbers to punch into G without impacting your whole thing?
Yeah, should be able to.
Okay, you ready?
As ready as I'll ever be.
All right, fire chief's salary.
Yes.
One oh five.
Even though the wish was one ten?
Yep. Uh, next one, twenty thousand, which is what they asked for.
Which will become ten.
But right now.
Correct, but just to come up with the number.
Yeah.
Next one, two hundred thousand even.
Wages?
Yep. Then thirty-five thousand, five thousand, fifteen thousand twice, six thousand for that IV pump.
Can I just, uh, fire expense, I thought we were gonna do, the turnout gear was gonna be zeroed.
This is the, this is the override.
Okay, yeah, right.
Six thousand for the IV.
Trying to find it.
It's blank.
You're on it right now.
Oh, sorry.
Exactly, it was more than that. It was more than six thousand.
Two, uh, two thousand, five hundred thousand, nine thousand,
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred, seventy-five thousand, and ten thousand.
So then do a sum on that rather than, get rid of that two oh four.
And then to that number I added FICA, but I only picked up the difference in wages for the fire chief.
Wait, I know that can't be right.
That's wrong, yeah, that's wrong.
Huh?
It's not nine ninety-nine.
A million.
It is, no, that's the right number.
What?
If you add up the, the, the column that I did.
Yeah, really?
Well, I mean, just in the third line, fire department wages, he added fifty thousand dollars.
Right, right. I wonder why are you going so high on all those lines and not even in the wish list?
Because I think, I think to get, I think to get the department to where it needs to be, I think we were underestimating the needs, and we're not going to have the ability to go back and if we're successful in this override, the numbers have, these numbers have to work. We can't go back next year and say, well, now we've done the budget and we, we need more money. We're, we're not gonna be able to go back for the fire department ask again.
Right, but we also need an override to pass it, that's what we're banking on.
True, so the difference between nine 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 and seven thirty-three is two.
Yeah, nine ninety-nine minus the seven thirty-three.
Is what?
Two hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Just do that math.
Nine eighty-one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nine nine five, nine nine, five hundred.
Yeah, it should. Mine is seven thirty-three. I thought we said about a quarter.
And that doesn't take in the police stuff, though?
Right, so, that's what I'm saying, so you get the two six, the difference, if, for the moment, if you just trust me, the difference between nine 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 and seven thirty-three is two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars rounding. Add in the wage adjustments for FICA, that's another twenty-seven hundred dollars. If there's two full-time employees, assuming a thousand dollars a month for medical coverage, that's the number I don't know, but I added twenty-four thousand there.
Might be a little low.
But, so we might have to tweak that.
Yeah.
That gets us to two ninety-two. Now, the difference on the PD side for the police officer, we already approved like twenty-one thousand in increases, and the budget two is sixty-something, so it's the difference between those two numbers, which I think is thirty-eight or thirty-nine thousand, right there. Difference between sixty and twenty-one, we'll just call it thirty-nine thousand. You add that thirty-nine to the two ninety-two, and we're looking at a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar override. And yes, we can adjust the fire department wages down if, if we think there's a different number that will work. My fear is that we're successful in getting the override, and the study comes back and says, you're a hundred thousand dollars short. We're gonna have to find that within the budget. We can't go back next year and ask for a second override for the fire department.
No, I agree, I agree with that.
I don't know, I just think that each of the lines, I mean.
Gotta be able to defend each line.
You have to be able to defend each line, and I think I said, just rounding up to the next, you know, like, I just feel like, I'm hoping, other than the staffing, that some of these requests were firm enough that we don't have to just add to the number of the override, because I think the higher it is, the less, I think the less likely it's gonna get passed.
Can anybody remember what our last override amount was that did this?
It was about a million.
That did pass?
Oh, no, no.
No, it didn't pass. Last one passed was for the schools. Yeah, it was like.
The one that passed, the one that was the menu.
It was like four ninety or something?
Okay, there's been one since I've been on the board.
That was how many years ago?
About three, maybe, three years ago?
Yeah.
Was it, uh?
Yeah, probably three years ago.
About that?
But honestly, I mean, the, you know, the economics of this is we get a two and a half percent increase every year in, in revenue, which is not keeping up.
Right, right.
With the increase in expenses every year, so periodically, I call this an adjustment. I, I don't know what else to call it.
Right.
Um, in order to, you know, keep us, keep us balanced.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's certainly an option, so that puts us at around three twenty. I mean, I don't know if three hundred is more palatable than three twenty, I mean, whatever, but I mean, we, we were thinking, I think, in that two fifty, two sixty range anyway.
Well, what were the figures that you just put up there, Ed? The ones that John was, um, listing off?
Back in the fire.
Right, if I could just take a look at that.
We can do that. There you go.
So you were putting in that column there?
G.
In G, and the F, F is the what? The budget two request?
Difference between. Difference in the year before for the budget two request.
Okay, so E then is the budget two request.
Correct.
So the ones that, I mean, what went up besides the staffing and the, uh, insurance?
Okay.
Wages went up to two hundred thousand, so that's fifty thousand dollar increase.
Yeah.
So building and turnout gear went up a couple thousand each, two, three thousand?
Expenses you raised up just to make it even.
Yeah, EMT wages went up a little bit.
It's mostly wages, cause again, with the idea of hiring at least another, you know, getting more of a full-time EMT, at least one, right?
And ambulance EMT expenses went up a bit.
I mean, we've made, I mean, if we just wanna follow what we did with EMS wages, the fire department wages, we can just make it one sixty. Now, that'll reduce it by forty thousand, which then puts us at two ninety.
Mm-hmm. Maybe?
I think so.
So that would be, cause right there, I mean, we jumped up the fire wages quite a bit with your rounding there, like forty thousand, right? Whereas on EMT wages, we only jumped it by six thousand.
Yep, well, yeah, because I think there was already a built-in hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar increase there. If you, if you see that.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, from three.
Correct.
Three seventy-five.
Oh, okay, yeah, because the three seventy-five's already in the budget, right?
Right.
I think it's worth reducing, and I think that's a huge jump. And, you know, I mean, it's not gonna end up being, I don't think, an entire year difference. You know, by the time the assessment's done and all that, I think.
I think I'd favor coming down just a, a little bit on those wages to ke, see if we can keep this under three hundred, if it's possible.
Yeah, me too.
I think it's more palatable, but, I don't know. I'm, I'm hearing the, the notion too, if we get stuck and we have to, you know, come up with higher cost, uh, higher wages or whatever, we have to deal with them. We, we won't have a second bite at the apple here, so if this is what we wanna put forth, then we have to be comfortable with it. I mean, what we could do would be to, you know, say that this is our option, you know, this is a good, a good option with the three twenty that John has proposed, and, you know, have Ed and Bradley tinker with it a little bit and see if they see any other better strategies or, or stronger rationale, cause I think we're gonna have to stand up and be able to, I, you know, really, really clarify why we're doing what we're doing here.
Mm-hmm.
So what's, you know, what's defensible, what's, you know, what's kinda iffy? Now, one of the things, if I'm not right, we put in the six thousand for the medical pumps, which Rainey, you said might be low, but that may all.
I was just looking at the capital, cause that was, I thought, what they.
I was gonna say, it may come out of capital, right?
Well, that hasn't been determined yet. Let me just see under fire.
So that could be, that could be a six thousand.
It was not listed on as.
That's because, yeah, it was what, part of his late update from last week.
Okay, so it's not on the one that, we don't, we don't have a newer capital list.
I have not updated that.
He's got on here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven capital, and IV pump's not on here.
Yeah, but he only, actually, while that's on his capital ex, Excel spreadsheet for twenty twenty-four, he only had submitted one, uh, actual request for twenty twenty-four, which was the tanker at two fifty. And then last week, he sent along two updates. One was the IV pumps, which I think, if my memory's correct, had gone to sixty-one hundred, and then, uh, work on the tanker, which was forty-seven thousand dollars.
So anyway, we might, out of the two, three twenty that John has just proposed, there's six thousand that might go away, because it could be on capital, right, rather than in here.
It could be, but I, I, I guess my other thought is, I, I know that this is all, budgets are a numbers game, right? It's a suggested roadmap, nobody ever really follows it, and we end up at the endpoint at some point. We're using a three hundred and forty thousand dollar credit somewhere else that's gonna come home to roost next year.
Yeah.
So I mean, if, if we take a scalpel to everything, and we get it down to, I mean, they're just, just, deal with it now, deal with it tomorrow, I, I don't know.
This is.
I don't know what the right number is, but.
Yeah, this is almost gonna be break even for next year's budget.
And, and honestly, I've only been on the board for two years, but, you know, every, every request that comes in from the fire department, I feel, is always low-balled.
Yeah.
It always ends up costing us more, whether it's the IV pumps that have now gone up to sixty-one hundred, or that beautiful sign out on College Highway. You know, I just, I feel that, you know, s, some people, it's, it's just part of their DNA. They, they just, they, they underestimate the numbers what they really need to be, and without having to study the right side of this whole thing, it's just kinda trying to add in some bumpers to keep us going. But I understand what you're saying, you know, there's a magic number where that, when we flip that number, it, it potentially becomes unpalatable to the voters. the voters.
I just want to say that I do think that the budgets, I think there, there is not a magic number, but I do think that people do pay attention to their budgets, and I think the department heads do a really good job, for the most part, staying within the budget. And fire department, there have been problems in various years with having extra and then buying things, and, I mean, so, I, I don't know. I, I think that if he came up with, you know, wish list, and we're exceeding that, that worries me too.
Well, I mean...
But again, and, and what this study finds, we may not have everything that they're recommending we have, so it may end up costing us more in order to, you know, meet, to fulfill whatever the requirements are that are defined
Right.
for us. I mean, it could go either way. So, this is, I think, somewhere in the middle.
And where did we just build in the money for the study? Remind me?
I was just going to...
We didn't.
I don't think you did.
I don't think we didn't.
We didn't. I would say it's somewhere in this...
Is this, is there another ARPA request?
Yeah, I would, I would probably suggest taking like fifteen or twenty out of that two-hundred thousand dollars and putting it somewhere else into, you know, fire or EMS expenses.
Yeah. For the study?
Yeah.
Specifically for the study.
Yeah, that's, that makes sense. So, not add to, keep it at, you know,
Mm-hmm.
keep it at the three-twenty, but instead of using it towards...
Not inflating it any further?
Yeah. Yeah. Not adding to it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, still at the, around the three-twenty total limit of what you figured out?
But you got to tell me what you think that study actually costs.
You just told us.
Didn't you just say fifteen or twenty thousand dollars?
I think John was the one with the figures earlier. I was just...
Put it somewhere.
I'm winging it.
I mean, fifteen is...
Sure. At least we'll know how high we can go.
Yeah. Work it backwards. Okay, I think that's...
So, yeah, about we, we reduce fire department wages by twenty thousand.
Yeah.
From like one-twenty down to one-eighty.
And, and create a line for a fire EMS study.
Right.
Right. So, at least we, yeah, I'd be comfortable with that as long as, you know, it's, because it's clearly defined, so that's the only purpose that money can be spent on.
Right. It'd have its own line, yeah.
Because otherwise, I'd say you put it under select...
It'll get washed in expenses.
Yeah.
So, fifteen thousand for the study?
Yeah.
I thought you said twenty.
Well, reduce, yeah, but here, what Maureen said, reduce the, the fire department wages from two-hundred to one-eighty.
Okay.
And then, and then put, build fifteen thousand in for the study. It still reduces the overall ask by five.
Yeah.
So, now, we're down to about three-twenty-five. And I don't know, for procedural purposes, if it makes sense for us to approve budget one, to close that out, and then defer, give the town administrator and Bradley forty-eight hours?
That's what I was going to suggest, when you come back on Thursday.
Work on the override numbers.
You know, if we basically are in agreement with budget one, but then
On Thursday.
you have a chance with Bradley to kind of fine-tune our, our back-of-the-envelope calculations here, just to be sure that we really are in the right, right ballpark. Does that sound doable, Ed?
Yeah. Uh, G will just move over to the tab two, where it's appropriate.
Okay.
And did we move anything to ARPA?
The twelve-thousand turnout, well, no.
No, we didn't.
We said we could move the twelve-thousand turnout gear...
If it's not approved.
To ARPA, if it's not approved, but we would, we put it in here for fifteen, I believe.
Okay.
Right. We put it in the override, but it could go to ARPA.
I think we're going to be, depending on how things go, we're going to be evaluating.
Yeah.
Maybe having to evaluate what's left and what we can fund if we have to.
Right. Yep. So, just, yeah, if you want to just have a, a heads-up just on ARPA, just for the, we, we'll go into this probably on our, maybe the April twenty-fifth meeting, I'm hoping. We'll take a look at, at at least a couple of the ARPA. We really need to chomp down on the financial software if we can, and then that leaves us, with what we've already approved, plus the financial software, we've committed a million seven-seventy-four, seven-eighty-eight and eighty-seven cents. That leaves us about sixty-nine, sorry, sixty-nine thousand seven-sixty-five uncommitted, and we have two requests from Canal Lanes, one for a sign, one for a website, and we have two requests from Board of Health, one for extended hours for fiscal twenty-four, and then one for the inspection services, which again, the request was thirty, but we've already encumbered ten of that. So, um, all in all, you know, we've got that to go. So, we're still within our, our window, and if we were to approve, everything that I'm seeing is pending, we'd have about twenty thousand dollars left, period.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's tight. So, to move too much more stuff to ARPA is...
Right.
But, there will be some things coming back. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, these overrides we put in on townwide and EMS, right, we had to, that's a temporary fix on the warrant until we can get line transfers.
Funds to transfer from.
So, that fifteen thousand would come back?
Yep.
Yep. All right. And then, there is, in a couple places, we had put in up-two amounts. The PSBC study, was an up-two amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-five, and then there were up-two amounts, or we rounded up, we rounded up amounts on the planning board zoning bylaws charge and the tennis court repair for the parks.
Wasn't there also one where we had to pledge a hundred percent of...
We did.
But there's reimbursements that are going to come back?
Right. Yeah, we had to pledge a hundred percent appropriate.
That's the Culvert grant for a hundred-and-forty thousand.
Correct, yeah. So, as that gets spent, some of that should come back in too, and the challenge is how much of that gets back in before December
Right.
of twenty-four, right?
Yes.
So that it can be reprogrammed. But, yeah, it should. So, yeah, so there's, there's a little bit of flux. So, if we're down to bare bones, we're at around twenty, twenty-one thousand, but as a couple of these things get re, what, replenished back into ARPA, I guess, we have a little bit of playroom, but not a lot still.
What ever happened with the audit?
What happened with it? We budgeted, oh, we budgeted a higher amount in here, and then we've got to do...
We're going to have to do a transfer.
Transfer.
Transfer, okay.
Yeah, because we need to then, you know...
Which way, identify the funds. You can either do it as a town meeting article or...
Well, we need to have it done as soon as possible.
Or departmental transfer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
Because...
So that we can sign off on that too.
Give everybody else an agreement. It seems like it's already late.
Yeah, no, so that we can chomp down on getting the audit engagement letter signed. Exactly.
So, after Ed Brad, Bradley crunched the numbers for budget two, we're looking at, because this says three-ninety, we're looking at...
Be closer, maybe three-twenty-five?
Three-twenty, okay.
We thought, maybe?
Well, don't, don't forget, that's all a column.
Yeah, there's other asks in there in column two.
Okay.
Actually, to prepare this for the budget, we'll have to go in, make everything that's the same
Okay.
that we're asking the same in request one for an override budget, so that, that total will change.
Yeah.
All right.
And then, the budget request two for fire EMS is now in column G, so that's going to...
So, really, it'd be just column G?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve fiscal year twenty-four budget of nineteen thousand eight-hundred-seventy-two dollars, no, nineteen million eight-hundred-seventy-two thousand eighty dollars and forty-seven cents.
I'll second that. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How much?
Your bold number, nineteen eight-seven-two oh-eight oh-point-four-seven.
So, you're spending the four-eighteen fifty-nine.
You're going to put it in FICA. I'd put it in FICA.
Yeah, okay. So, I think everybody voted aye. That was approved. Okay?
Okay. Who seconded?
Francine.
Okay. And then, we'll have Ed and Bradley come back to us with final numbers on the, on the override for Thursday.
And I'll just say, it's not intentional, but I will not be here for the vote for the override, so you guys can swing alone.
Okay. My sense is that, in theory, you support it.
I do.
At around three-hundred and twenty...
If you don't change it too much.
Around three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And specifically for emergency services.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, really, it's for fire, because the only thing that's coming out of police is one officer and an A, halftime, halftime, half-time aide.
Right, exactly. Okay, are we done on that part? Good enough for tonight? Okay.
Good.
Thank you on that.
I think we could, um, the item that I think I, people here, here for?
Yep, we've got a couple. So, the next one, the Green Committee grant proposals, we don't need to do anything with, because we dealt with that last week, and so that's been taken care of. Shall we pick up? We've got two things. I would probably move the warrants around. Let's go back briefly to the COA job description. Joy, you want to tell us anything about what's happened with that?
Good job.
We talked about the job posting.
Or the job posting, whatever, whatever you guys have dealt with here on that. We'll come back, circle around on that, and then we'll get back onto the further discussion on the public safety building committee recommendations.
Um, yeah, I think, did, did the committee or the board receive the job posting?
There was an email that Janet sent. I don't know if that's the final one, though.
She just sent it to me just now.
My understanding, that was the final one. Was that your understanding, Francine?
The one I think they have is, is the final one.
Yes.
This is just the posting.
So, you want me, you want me to just go through the, the changes?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have it up.
Okay. Why? The changes from what?
Well, no, 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 but just, just to put it all together, to say, it's an increase in hours from twenty-six to thirty-two. It's an increase in net of six hours. We're increasing the salary range from thirty-nine seventy-sixty-six, the, the range going, the, the new range will be thirty-nine seventy-sixty-six to sixty-four five-seventy-seven, which turns into an hourly rate of twenty-three point thirty-nine to thirty-eight point sixty-six. That would, that would make up the sixty-four thousand.
So, what you just sent me is not the latest? This must not be the latest thing that we have. So, you guys have met since I got this request to put it on the agenda?
Yeah, the salary I have is thirty-nine zero-seven-one to sixty-four five-seventy-eight.
Yeah.
That's what Chris just sent me.
That's what we have, that's...
And then, the top, depending upon experience, was sixty-four five-seventy-seven sixty-six.
Okay, that's not on the chart.
Right, it's rounded.
That's not what's on.
Sixty-four five-seventy...
But, but it's rounded, because she's, she's listing seventy-six cents.
It is, yeah. Yep.
All right. And that translates into, and I don't have the scale, but a grade six, step five, or is it grade five, step six?
Grade five, step six.
Grade five, step six.
Grade five, step six. Okay. So, I mean, that's basically, um, the main piece of, the PRF is ready, was submitted, will be submitted to Ed for signature and approval, and then that'll move on to the PQB and finance, et cetera.
Okay.
Um, and I believe, I believe that's, that's it on the, on the changes.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions on that?
I mean, they're hoping also, this is another thing, to hopefully have maybe a week or two overlap, if we're fortunate enough in the recruiting process
Yes.
to get somebody in a, would now be record time. Two to three months is now record time in terms of replacements. So, we'll be started on that, as soon as the paperwork gets through the system.
Okay. All right. And this looks like we've got the qualifications down, bachelor's experience, past experience working with older adults
Mm-hmm.
and/or municipal experience.
Right.
Et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah.
And the other question was, was there any other place that we haven't normal indeed? I know there's also the Massachusetts Council of Aging website for the job posting. Was there anywhere else that we should post?
I don't know. Did, did we end up finally using a free Indeed site, Ed? Because that's another cost, but we did use the free one.
We're using the free version.
Okay.
Okay.
And as an added bonus, there's part of the ad hoc search committee is someone from the Massachusetts Council on Aging, and hopefully that person has knowledge of or access to information about some people who might want to be changing jobs and some likely candidates. So, I'm hoping that works out.
Mm-hmm. Okay. This currently, this will also be in our webpage, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Anybody have any questions about this? Do we need a vote to just say that we're in agreement with this and to let Ed move forward, or what was the request of us?
Well, yeah, you would have to vote to approve the, if there was any change in the job description at least.
Okay.
Well, we don't have cover of the job.
Yeah, this is job.
Just the...
I'll make a motion to approve the Council on Aging Director job posting.
Okay.
I'll second. Did you, was that a motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Renee, then, Joy, okay. Any further discussion about that? All right, if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
What do you say, John?
I abstain, because I'm, I'm just not clear. If we approve it...
This is just to get it...
But, if it went to PBB, it would be a recommendation to you. You guys are, I'm fine, but I, I think if it's approved here, I don't think it needs to go to PPP, because it just got approved.
But you still need to do the actual PRF, right?
I'll be the one saying the PRF, so it'll come from me rather than the select board.
Yeah.
Approving the posting, which contains the information, not, not the PRF.
Yeah, as, yeah. So, it's just the posting, not the PRF, because the department...
Right.
The overall supervisor would be the one submitting it, right, to PQB?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's all we're doing?
Okay.
So, would you like to vote, or?
Sure. I'm okay.
Okay. I think I hear five, five in favor. All right, no opposed. Okay, so that's fine. We'll let that move on. Thank you. All right, good. So, next, I'm going to suggest, since we have some people here in the audience, that we hold off on the articles and jump to the next issue, which was on our agenda, which was continued discussion on the public safety building committee recommendations. And, I don't know, does anyone have something they would like to say first, or shall we go into our comments?
Could I say something first?
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to mention that we did end up having a meeting this evening. I didn't stay for the entire meeting. I know, um...
Two minutes.
Two minutes after, okay, all right. But, um, I think the committee just came together and kind of reviewed where we were at. I think, I, you know, because the select board was charged with re-looking at videos and all that sort of thing, I kind of summarized what I saw in all the different videos, and, um, I think it comes down to, well, people were very disappointed that Christina resigned, and they felt like it was close enough, so to speak. They acknowledged that it wasn't as objective, that the scoring piece was objective, but there was a subjective part to the interviews, and in a perfect world, we would have had a matrix or some kind of a scoring sheet for the interviews. So, I think that people felt like we just, you don't want any barriers to this process, that we just, it's unfortunate the way things went, and the whole gender thing was, you know, unfortunate, and we're not sure what to make of it. We just agreed it was a bit of an elephant in the room. So, anyway, I, I don't think we, we didn't make a motion to do anything. We just discussed it and felt like we really need this to keep going forward, and it's unfortunate that there's another bump in the road, and that, it was all just, everybody got a chance to speak about it. So, anything else to add, Cindy, since you were there?
Cindy Palmer, seventy-one Glendale Road. I will just add that I feel like people really want to work cohesively. We, we all recognize the importance of a public safety building, and we're sorry this happened, but we're hopefully going to come to some resolution, or perhaps the select board's going to come to somewhat resolution and board's going to come to somewhat resolution and give us some guidance in order for us to move forward. I think there was this sense of, we want to work together, and I think that's the only thing I would add to that, but otherwise, it was great.
So if I'm interpreting what you said, going forward with a decision that's been made?
No, I mean, no, because no decision's been made, since the select board is the awarding authority.
No, I meant the recommendation of the committee.
Yeah, what I heard today, and correct me if I'm wrong, both Ed and Cindy, was that they acknowledged that the reason why CBA may have edged out in their votes, because they did feel like they were the better presenter, and they knew that they were the better...
The HKT was the better presenter.
HKT was the better presenter, and they also scored the highest. But they acknowledge that they're local, they know them, they know the buildings that they built and have been in them, and that's why it was enough to tip them in favor of CBA. They realize that that's subjective, but in the absence of anything else, that's the reason why it tipped.
But, yeah, but the same time, they were, the people that were present, and it wasn't 100% present, there was one person was absent, Chief Fillingsworth was absent, but, that the, the, both the written presentation and the oral presentation were both, the better of the two was, was HKT. They agreed with that. But they, you know, there wasn't any new vote or anything like that. They just wanted to allow the select board to, through, through me, Reenie primarily, let the select board know that the, the goal is to get this done, and to find the right firm for it. That's my sense.
Okay, all right. Okay, yeah, Christina, since you're here, would you like to say something, and then we'll just talk about our reactions?
Christina Metzen, 40 Rattle Hill Road. So, I had come to state why I have chosen to withdraw from the committee, and now things are a little bit uncertain to me. I was going to just give my opinion, my observations and impressions, and the reasons why I felt compelled to step down. So, with things as undecided as they apparently are right now, shall I proceed, or, or what?
I mean, I'd be very interested, the letter that you sent basically just said, you don't have anything to offer, and you're discouraged. So I'd be interested in knowing what your perspective is on this. I mean, I don't think that anything has changed, there's no vote to any, you know, we're all just sort of trying to figure out what's the best course of action here.
Right. And all I, all I wanted to do when, when we met last time was, because we knew that the chair had recused himself, and then we had gotten your, your letter right around the same time. So when you've got both a chairman and a vice chair that are kind of out of the picture, it raised an alarm bell in my head to say, all right, we need to understand, kind of from our own perspective, what's, what's happened here. And so our assignment was to watch the video that had the two presentations on it, and then we also had a copy of the, the overall scoring checklist for all the five firms that showed everybody's individual score, as well as the 10 or so questions that members of the committee had developed, which you had asked during the interview. So, that was just for us to, to sort of review that, get, get it in our minds as to what, what we saw, and we haven't had a chance yet to talk about our impressions of that. But if you would like to, you know, wait for that, or if you would like to give your few words of why you felt like you needed to, to resign at that time, it's up to you.
Well, I, I will. One thing I would like to know is, did you also have a chance to review the proposals, the written proposals?
The proposal itself, no.
All right, then I'll make my comments about that. I felt that the HKT proposal was flawless. It was, it addressed every item that was laid out in the RFQ. It was clearly written. It gave a chart with a schedule, a scope of services, or a schedule of services, excuse me. Their portfolio and their credentials are impressive, and on the scoring sheet notes, you know, it was just, it was easy to read, and amongst all five, it wa, it really stood out. It was unmatched in its clarity and thoroughness. So my notes for that, the scoring sheet I just wrote, the RFQ was extremely clear and well-written, and that there was an emphasis on community, building community support. So, above and beyond the, going through and addressing task by task, at the end of it, at, at just after task eight, which was the final task, there's a whole section on building community support, and we know that that is the key to getting this building built. And I was impressed by that. The whole, the whole thing, I, again, I'll just say, in my mind, was flawless. On the other hand, Kayla and Benick was incomplete. I thought it was very hastily written. We know, Kayla and Benick is known by all of the former members of the 2014 committee, and so clearly there was a leaning toward, toward them. When we were, when we were assessing whether they had even met the essential criteria, it was not, I had put on my notes that it wasn't specified that they could finish the job within the timeframe that was listed. That was in the yes/no category. And so, one of the members of the committee, of the 2014 committee, spoke out and said it would be a mistake to overlook CBA. And so, let's see, my notes on that were that the table of contents and the sections don't correspond. So Section 1 was supposed to include the introduction to the firm, representative projects, project approach, references, resumes of the principals, and resumes of the consultants. Well, Section 1 is three pages of generic material. That's it. Not the one picture. And then there were two Section 2s. The tasks as outlined in the RFQ didn't correspond with the way they addressed, or they didn't correspond, the RF, the proposal, the CBA proposal didn't correspond with, with the RFQ. They, they listed many feasibility studies that they had carried out, but they were all without summaries, and the summaries were requested, and they didn't, it did not include a schedule of services. So those were my notes for that. Now, there was a hasty looking through, the entire committee started looking through this proposal to see if there was any commitment to meeting, meeting the timeframe. And finally, one of the members found this in the form of a symbol of a handshake, and just the commitment that they would meet the timeline. And it took us quite a while to find this. Whereas with the HKT, there is a full page with a schedule of services on it outlining timeframe. So the difference in the two proposals, the written proposals, was very stark in my mind. Then as to the interviews, the HKT, again, they were articulate, energetic. I actually had a sense of enthusiasm. I, I thought, oh, this, these women are, are great. You know, based on the impressive nature of their written proposal, everything in their interview confirmed my feeling about that. So, when they were asked the question about cost, I thought that their answer was spot on. They said essentially that they'd itemize it. This was not written by professionals, and they said, we've asked for a lot, let's, we'll itemize it so you can figure out what you want to spend your money on, and what you can afford to spend your money on. It was the right answer for me. So, and I was cheering back, as you know, if you watched it. And then when Kayla and Benick entered the room, it was, there was a lot of handshaking and backslapping and jocularity. It wa, it seemed like old allegiances were being rekindled. And as I sat there and watched, I thought, HKT doesn't have a chance. And I, I didn't, their, their presentation, I didn't find to be strong. Mr. Elgin spent a good five minutes of just the 30 minutes they had reviewing a failed project, which is this one. He, he set out, you know, he placed different possibilities on that hill, and I think all by way of saying, eliminating it in, for us. He was writing the feasibility study as he spoke. And I fig, and in several instances, he was going, he's recommending a single-story building. Now, HKT said they have built up to three-story buildings. They weren't saying, we're going to build that for you. They were saying, there are lots of options to explore. And I, he also, so he eliminate, he essentially eliminated this parcel. He said that Clark Street, we don't need a firehouse or a, a public safety building, excuse me, at Nera Park. And so I just felt he wasn't, he wasn't, CBA was not going to come to the table with an open mind. They have too much history in here. And there are too many people on the present committee who have a relationship with him that I just don't think allows for open discussion, new ideas. So, I chaired the review, as you know, the, the meeting that we reviewed, where we reviewed. And I said at the beginning that I wouldn't entertain motions until everybody had had a chance to speak, and that I was hoping for consensus. So, we worked around the room, and everybody did have a chance to speak. And there was one particular comment that deeply bothered me, and that was that this person had the impression that the HKT presenters might just be the sales team. They are principals in an established firm. And to suggest that they couldn't do the job, that they were just a sales force, was disturbing to me. And I was also disturbed that not one of the men on the committee did not speak up in defense of the integrity of this firm. So that bothered me, and anyway, it was clear eventually that we were not going to have consensus, and the vote was taken. And I recognized and respect the will of the committee, and I handed the, I handed the meeting back to Mark, and it was then that it was brought up that we need to add to the contract language about building community support. And people, people who have worked with CBA in the past know that that's not their forte. And so it had to be added to the contract, and I think that maybe answers your question last week about why that was, why public, building public support was specifically added to the contract. So, Mark was tying up the meeting, and I just immediately understood that I had to withdraw, that I cannot work with Kayla and Benick. I know them from 2014. And to be very candid, I find Mr. Elgin's arrogant and demeaning, and condescending demeanor to be offensive. So, the majority, you know, the vote was taken, and I just knew immediately that I couldn't stay on, and that's where I stand. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks for clarifying all that.
I, as I said, I didn't, that, therein lies my discouragement. My regret is that I am committed to, I have been committed to this committee, and put a lot of time into it, and I, as much as anybody else, wants to see a public safety building that we can be proud of. So, anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you, Christina, for sharing that. Okay, so, at this point, I don't know, I'm hoping that everyone had a chance, Joy, I know you were off and on last week with other commitments, but I'm hoping everybody had a chance at least to, to watch the videos. And, you know, when I had thrown out the idea last week, I gather, whenever, seems like ages ago, it was just a few days ago, I had talked about some sort of a scoring matrix, and obviously, I, you know, did not hold myself to that, because I think, in retrospect, while matrices are great, it didn't seem appropriate for us as a select board to, excuse me, after the fact, put on a scoring matrix for us, that, you know, we weren't privy to all the information from the committee itself. So, I think, you know, as I alluded to perhaps, that, you know, usually when you're hearing a presentation or watching a presentation, you know, in my mind, anyway, I'm looking for clarity and organization and, you know, the ability to answer questions. And I, you know, those were kind of just, just sort of simple things from anybody's presentation, be it a college one or a professional one. So, I kind of tried to watch it with those, those ears and eyes. And so I would like to maybe just ask anybody who would like to share what they heard and saw. Reenie, I think you have already made your point clear. I'd rather you wait a little bit and let the rest of the committee chime in with anything. Anybody that would like to go first, and I'll hold my thoughts to the last. Anybody?
Okay, I'll, I'll go.
Francine?
I watched them both, I printed out your questions, I wrote the responses that they gave, and then at the bottom were my impressions as I listened to the presentations. So, I agree with, with a lot of what Christina had to say. I, I thought they were very upfront in identifying their partners in the process, you know, the engineering firm, the environmental firm, they had names. Yes, they gave you the whole picture upfront of who's going to be involved in this, and I appreciated that. They described the process in, in great detail, which I think is very important to us, having had the experience the last time around, of perhaps less community involvement, less of a process and more of a product kind of thing. And I think that's important to the town to buy into this, this type of investment, because it's, it's, it's going to be a tremendous undertaking for the town. I, I thought they were interesting in terms of how they were going to approach a functional design to the facility, that they were going to follow people on their jobs, and see what they did all day, and see what they needed in the space and the, and the interactions and all of that. The impression I had from CBA is that they already knew what people did, so they were going to design the space. They were very open about looking at all the sites for their pluses and their minuses, along with the, you know, the community input. They, I thought, were very proactive in extending support to the committee and to others who were going to be involved in educating the town about it, and then ultimately helping to raise funds in support of this, and identify that. And they were, they were very willing to do that. Their answer about why they did not have a fee was...
You keep saying "they," and we're not sure which "they" you're talking about.
I'm sorry, HKT. I'm sorry, I'm talking about HKT. And I, what, what they, their answer about the fee, you know, about the fee that we would, they would be charging us for this, and they described how they go about in setting the fee. It was based on our scope of work, and until they know in great detail what it is that we want and need, then they'll come back to us with the fee, as opposed to saying it's going to be this range. So, I, I thought their whole approach was, was very intelligent. They talked about sustainability, they talked about, you know, repurposing rainwater, geothermal concerns, integrity of the materials that they use. I, I, I appreciated that. On the other hand, CBA, this may be more than you're asking for, had a good understanding of the functions of a police and fire department. I mean, they, they, they were describing what, what went on in there, whether it is, it happens in ours, I, I don't know, but anyway, they, they had, they were including public space, multi-use space in this building. I wasn't sure what, what that was for in their design. I thought they focused a lot on the old site, as you're describing. I thought they focused a lot on the old site, as you're describing, why it did or didn't work in terms of their first thing. I had the impression that they pretty much already selected a site, as opposed to going through the process of identifying the feasibility of each site. That was my impression during the presentation. I thought they had, you know, the examples of the construction that they did were good, really good. They've had experience in building multiple public safety facilities. I wasn't sure... So, I would... Anyway, that was my impression. I guess the question, I won't even go there.
Yeah, we're not asking for any kind of vote. We're just impressions and...
Those were my impression. I think they're both qualified. I think for someone building from the ground up, I think HKT did a great job.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Anybody else next? Anybody? John or Joy?
I watched both interviews. I think HKT was very sophisticated in their presentation and professional. And I did like how they laid out how you can kind of have an à la carte choice with the services. I understood the familiarity between, is it Chalo Benick? Chalo Benick, CBA. And, you know, I think it's a kind of two-sided coin, the familiarity, where like, yes, you know, a lot of people, you know, want to work with someone they know that's local, that knows the town. But also, it was a sense of they know the town. So, they kind of are coming in with already their own preconceived notions about what should happen and where our focus should be. So, I see both perceptions on that. I think just overall, HKT was the more sophisticated. And I think that we would get more from them, where I think we would just get more from them with our money. Our money would be better spent with their services overall from what they were offering during the presentation. But I understand why members of that committee would want to work with people that they are familiar with.
John?
So, it's HBT and CBA, correct?
HKT.
HK. All right. So, I, you know, I only had one focus, her thought, when I looked at it. I was looking for a reason to overturn the numerical ranking that was given, and I didn't see one. So, my question still goes, you went into this process with a ranking. What, you know, I was expecting to find something on the video that would say, okay, that's why, that's where the switch happened. But I didn't see it. So, all things being equal, I say it's not supposed to be set on price, that, you know, there's really, in my view, there shouldn't have been any discussion about the price because that was premature. I understand why it might have been asked, but it's supposed to be a blind study. You send in your responses, you're judged on the merit of your response, you're ranked, you come in. And the interview was really to validate what you put in writing. And I didn't hear any, either one of them that invalidated what they had submitted. So, I still don't understand why the number-one-ranked person, firm, was not selected.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Rini, would you like to say something before I do?
I just want to address the point that John just made. As we mentioned before, for the senior center one, it was a closer score for sure. But it was unanimous choice to pick the company, the firm that we used, which, by the way, we're all very satisfied with in the end. But I think the important difference was that, A, it was unanimous by the committee to go in that direction. And I also think that there were concerns on the second-choice one, but had received a higher ranking because they contracted out all their services. So, they had an office in Connecticut. This is called ADM. They had an office in Connecticut.
You talk about the senior center now.
Yeah. But I'm just saying that I just like to be consistent, but I just wanted to point out the differences was that they did a lot of contracting out of their services. So, I think the committee felt like we'd be better off going with a unified firm, even if they subcontract out. So, that was the difference. And I reviewed the minutes, I mean, the video from when we scored the original ones and made notes. I reviewed the interviews and I also reviewed the actual selection of the vote. So, I feel like I've been watching videos all weekend. But, and so, I have a lot of notes. And I think that the bottom line is that when we went through them initially, we said that four of them met the basic criteria. And the only one that wasn't meeting the basic one was CBA. Oh, we questioned whether they did because they didn't have a lot of the forms that we immediately saw. They didn't have that schedule and all that. And then, I just felt that there was an attempt, you know, on the second evaluative criteria. There was a consistent attempt to get them into the interview process. And so, and I think it comes down to, and I understand, I think it comes down to what Joy basically said was, there's a two sides to every coin. To me, it felt inappropriate to do the feasibility study in front of us and go so far as to select the term, select the land, and at the same time, downplay the importance of endangered species. I thought they were...
Oh, that was very inappropriate.
That was very inappropriate.
When they started talking about that, as someone who used to be on the conservation commission, and then they started talking about identifying what endangered species, I was like, that's not... That was very inappropriate.
And I get that to builders, and somebody from the committee today said that, you know, they just, when they hear that, they just think, more dollar signs. Well, there are a lot of people in this town that don't look at it that way. And so, you need to be able to address their concerns without dismissing them. And I think that whole community engagement piece... So, it comes down to, you know, and another member today basically said, "I stand by my, it's okay to want this firm because I know them and they're local and I like the buildings they've put in there." And I said, "Well, that doesn't give the other firm a chance then." And he said, "Well, that's, I understand that's objective and that's why I selected them." So, it's, like you said, it's two sides to every coin. To me, I felt like it's, you know, it's not... Nowhere in the RFQ did it say, "It has to be a local firm. You have to be familiar with the committee and you have to have gone into the buildings that they actually made." And so, it became a matter of people choosing people that they were familiar with, who had worked with before, they liked working with before. And I just don't think that that's a level playing field.
Okay. All right. Well, I also, following my own assignment, spent time, in fact, I watched the video twice just to be sure I wasn't missing anything, not two hours consecutively, I have to say. I did spread it out over the week.
You can actually turn up the thing. I did like 1.5 speed instead of...
Oh, speed? I shouldn't have done that. I didn't do that.
It helps.
It may help, yeah. I'll have to remember that for select board meetings anyway. I'll have to think about that. But anyway.
People sound like the chipmunks.
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
Talk fast.
No, I think, you know, it's interesting. I mean, I, you know, I, hearing all this, and I do, I do see, you know, both sides of, you know, what the rationale was, I think, for people to get to their vote. And yet, you know, looking at the scoring sheet, I mean, I think there was one mark against, if you will, the HKT scoring. If I read that right, there was a full scoring, I think, of 70 points at one point in time. And it was like 69 was their original score. And then, by taking out the chairman's score, it went down to 62. And that was still much higher than CBA at 55. And then, the other three dropped off significantly into the 40s and one in the 30s, I think. So, there were clear that there were top two. I mean, the three were easily eliminated. And so, I think the, you know, the scoring sheet, you know, stood for itself. And watching the interviews, and obviously, on the video, HKT is first. And I, just hearing that, you know, in the presentation, that we had the two principals there from HKT, one with, I think, 38 years of experience and the other with 22 years of experience as principals in the firm, was pretty impressive in itself to have that kind of longevity. And then, you know, I think what was also interesting was talking about how they were going to work with their, I guess I would call it a consortium in a way, of other firms that would help put this whole process together. I mean, you know, again, as sort of Francine mentioned, they talked about the process of how they would work about this. And they would bring in a cost estimator firm, I believe, somebody else that would do sort of the mechanical, electrical plumbing stuff, and then another person, or another firm that would do more of the environmental permitting and other kind of structural engineering kinds of things. So, to me, it was just a well-thought-out, okay, well, they're not pretending that they're going to do it all by themselves, but they've got the knowledge to bring in others and have obviously worked together on other projects. The community part is something I was really looking for, and I actually heard it much more strongly out of HKT than I did with CBA. I really do think that we have to, we can't fail at this. Well, you know, just as we were talking about, you know, the budget and the override, we're not going to get another chance at this. I mean, this has been so many years in the go, in the process, and we've got to do it right. Nobody's disagreeing of the need for a public safety complex whatsoever. And so, I think we've got to be able to do it right and bringing along the community in something that's going to be a long-term project, probably very high cost, that, you know, people have got to understand some of the reasons and need for why we have to go in that direction. And we shouldn't assume that the residents in town understand the need for it because I, you know, I doubt there's been too many tours lately of the police station or the fire department by anybody from school kids on up. But I mean, I think, you know, there's a whole educational aspect that we have to be responsible for. And I certainly felt like I heard that more out of HKT to say, you know, "We want to know, you know, what's going to be, what we can do to help rally the town to support this. And we want to work with you to find out where the weak points were in the past and how we can try to correct that." And we aren't doing our job, and I think that I'm sort of paraphrasing, but I think I remember this, you know, "We wouldn't be doing our job if we can't help you get this passed." The thing I did like at the very end, I think Cindy, actually, you were the one that asked if they had questions of the committee. And the question that I thought was fairly unique was from HKT, saying, "We'd actually like to know what you think the level of support in town is right now." And that generated, I think, a pretty good discussion of sort of a 50-50 response, if I remember. But I think that showed a level of, I don't know, just reality, I guess, you know, to say, "Okay, we know this is going to be a hard sell, but, you know, we're here to work with you to help try to sell whatever comes out in the final process." So, I thought that was all very interesting. I think CBA certainly has qualifications. They've done many similar complexes around the area. They're well-known in Western Massachusetts. The advantage of them being local, yeah, I can understand the reason for that. But at the same time, I don't know that that needs to be a barrier as it has been in the past. I mean, I think we all learned to live remotely and via Zoom over the last two or three years. And certainly, I think the work that Abacus did with the senior center was proof that, you know, they were meeting pretty frequently, if it was a couple, a couple times a month, maybe, or at least once a month.
Janet said 31 or 32 meetings.
Whatever. But I mean, there were a number of meetings and almost biweekly, and most of those were via Zoom. And so, it's not impossible. Now, the disadvantage is not being able to see a close-by site that has been built through the HKT team. But again, they did provide some photos. There are some things online. If you look at the different towns that they mentioned, you know, Tewksbury is one that they mentioned. It's, you know, it's a drive. It's a two-hour drive probably. But, you know, if people were that serious about really wanting to go see it, I think it could be done somehow. We could work together to figure that out if a field trip needed to be taken. But, so, I see those as reasons, but I don't see them as deal breakers, in my mind, I guess. So, I think I also feel that in terms of the scoring and the overall presentation and who can come and help us work together with this with fresh eyes, I would certainly also be leaning toward HKT. So, yes, Christina, last comment, and then we're going to close off on this. Thank you.
I'd just like to make the point that the firm that does the feasibility study isn't necessarily the firm who will design the building. And I don't deny CBA's qualifications for buildings, but this is a different process.
Right. Yep. No, I would also tend to agree with that, that, you know, you could have a different firm doing the overall feasibility and concept, you know, fleshing out the concept, and then you turn that over to bid for another firm to actually do the construction. That's oftentimes, certainly in my international work, that's how we had to do it. It was rare that you had the same firm follow from step one to, you know, cradle to grave kind of thing. So, there's a value in separation, you know. And, you know, any good construction firm ought to be able to follow a design that's been put forward. So, anyway, so that's kind of where we are. So, I guess the question is, what can we, should we do? What ability do we have as a select board to... I think what came before us was a question to accept the recommendations, right, of the Public Safety Building Committee. That was what they came to us to present, I believe, last meeting. And I guess we could take a motion, take a vote, if you would like to do that, as to whether we wanted to accept those recommendations, unless there's any further discussion. I'm looking for guidance as to how we should proceed and do our job of due diligence. I do think there's a chunk of money to be spent on the feasibility study. As we noted last meeting, there's $50,000 that's already been allocated as part of the legislative process through Senator Velez and Representative Pease. And then, through the ARPA money, we have put forth another up to $125,000. So, again, in my mind, that $50,000 gets spent first so that in the negotiation of the fee for the feasibility study, if we don't need that whole 125, some of that comes back into the ARPA pool as well. So, I just want us to, you know, do our due diligence, which is why I wanted us to also take a look at this, given the enormity of the project ahead of us and the number of years it may take to really come to opening the door on a real public safety complex that we can all be proud of in town. So, I'm open to next steps from my colleagues.
Do you need a motion?
Sure.
I'll make...
Go ahead, Francine. Sorry.
I was just going to say, I'll make the motion for the select board not to accept the recommendation from the Public Safety Committee for hiring the CBA.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Do you want to make part of that motion to go ahead and make the award to HKT?
Yep. And for the board to move forward with hiring the firm HKT.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I would just say negotiate with HKT, right?
Yeah, negotiate.
Okay. Negotiate with HKT for the feasibility study.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I don't like to be in the business of Monday morning quarterbacking. And that's sort of what this feels like to me.
I agree.
And, you know, I think there's merit to both. But hearing some discrepancies in the scoring and interview questions and so on and so forth, I guess it was necessary to bring it to us to help add some additional input into this, okay?
And in all fairness, let me just add one PS to that. I think in all fairness, whether there had been the issue of recusal and resignation or not, I think I might have still gone ahead and recommend that we also watch the presentation just because of the enormity of the project.
Yeah, I agree with you. And it's important that we did, regardless of who does the job. It's important that we know who these folks are and what they can do.
Joy?
I just want to say, I'm making this motion not because I don't have confidence in the committee, but I do feel that this is in the best interest of the town. And I think as the select board, sometimes we do have to be the judge in making the best interest decisions for this town.
Right. And I would just add that last week, when the members of the committee were before us, there were, the phrase kept getting repeated, "I shouldn't have to come here and defend myself for my vote. You know, I'm on this committee to do it." Okay, you are. But we're elected by the citizens. We weren't appointed by the body of five to which you were. We were elected by the 6,100 citizens. And therefore, you had a charge to make a recommendation. You made your recommendation, and contrary to popular belief, this board is not a rubber stamp.
Okay. Thank you. Rini?
Well, both of you said kind of what I was going to...
Well, both of you said kind of what I was going to say anyway, but I just wanted to say that having been on both these committees and being part of this whole process, I really am grateful to the select board for your willingness to watch these videos. It's sitting down and watching at least a couple of hours and reviewing this in due diligence. Um, I really appreciate you doing that. And I also, this is only the second time in six years of being on this select board where I didn't take the recommendation of a committee. And the first time was for a board member for the COA, and it basically changed the direction of the COA. And this is the second time that, and I don't appreciate being on a committee and not taking the recommendation of the committee, but I also feel that to spend up to $175,000 on something, I feel like I need to be behind it in order to do it. So, I support it.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second. Could I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, this motion passes to not endorse the recommendation of the committee and to move forward with negotiations for HKT. Thank you very much. All right, and thank you. And let's move on to the next, uh, agenda item, which will be the warrant articles.
Can I just ask a question about the Duar Green Communities Grant? So, we voted last time to, um, to support the, the projects that had the best bang for the buck, but we were short $5,000, if I remember correctly, and...
We're around there.
And so, how was it, how was it...
I will have to put in an ARPA application for that difference.
I forgot about that one. I didn't have that as my intent.
So, you'll see that next week because it's the last meeting of the month.
Okay. And just as a, since we have these, what, what do we have to do with the green committees and communities? Is there an application to fill out? Are these things...
We'll have to send, send them into DOE ER and see if they accept them as meeting their criteria. So, that's the next step.
The proposals that you gave us, or...
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, yes, I will put that in my encumbered list of about 5,000 on ARPA.
I think it might be a little over, but I'll give you the...
Yeah, I'll make it six. How's that?
I'll, I'll send you the number.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I'll add that to my list. Okay, good. So, how about, just in terms of, um, I just want to be sure that we're corralling the various, excuse me, warrant articles here. Um, we've got a list of them, but we've got to get, uh, we've got to get these signed by next Thursday? Is that the goal?
Next Monday.
Monday at the latest. Monday, because Robert's going to do his meeting on Monday night, right?
Yes.
Absolutely. So, we may be seeing you over the weekend. Is that what you're telling us?
Well, you might see an email from me, but you might see me, too.
We may have to sign something, yeah, okay.
When are we voting on them, then? Thursday?
Well, I think we'd have to vote on them Thursday.
Yes.
Yeah. So, is there anything else on this, based on the things we've talked about? Um, the one that I mentioned, and I guess I want to be sure that's here, was the, um, the $15,000 that came out of ARPA for the overages. That would be a line item transfer. So, in your lists of various line item transfers, would that be one?
Well, if we know where the funding source is for them, we can do that. If not, we cannot.
Yeah.
Okay. But we have about a month on either side of, like, starting May 1st, we can go ahead and...
And do departmental transfers, which, yes.
Is that what you're thinking will happen with those?
Okay, so, different.
I can, I can take, I can take another look back at some of those because I remember, well, actually, you know what? Actually, we can take care of, I think, all of those, uh, because we can do an appropriation out of ambulance receipt, reserve for appropriation to cover the shortfalls of the EMS. And I believe I had identified most of all of my...
There's a couple of other bills that weren't related to EMS, though.
Yeah.
There are a couple.
There's $4,500 for the townwide...
Wasn't the copier or something else?
Well, yeah, that's on my side. So, I, I separated the two out into two different POs, so. But I believe I had, I think I had identified funding sources for those. So, I'll look at those, uh, also.
What about getting the numbers on the tran, the, all the different funds? Is that going to be available by Thursday?
All the different funds?
Transfers from free cash to operational and...
No, we don't have free cash yet.
So, how is that going to be able to be put into the, on article?
You want my gray side? All, all three will be listed with dollar amounts, which will be amended at the town meeting.
All right. Is there any, anything else that we've been hearing as we've been talking through budget that we're, you know, that we're not thinking about for, um, for article? Do we know what's happening with the zoning bylaws yet? Is that going to go, go through?
I, I don't know how it is. Uh, I'm going to have to finalize that with, uh,
Planning Board?
With the Plan, Planning Board. Uh, from what Town Council says about it, I almost feel we're better off waiting to a special town meet, town meeting for those.
Yeah. The challenge there, I think, is that a lot of those have not been before the town, before. They're new, and, you know, seriously revised, significantly revised.
Exactly. And that, that was...
So, that may generate a lot of discussion.
And that was what Town Council brought up. She, she said, you know, unlike what the Bylaw Review Committee has brought forward and broken apart, um, you know, what they have seen in the past is, okay, there's, and he, there's a recodification, which is changing the sections, the article numbers, whatever, with very minor, uh, shall we say, edits, such as Board of Selectmen to Select Board and things like that, uh, which go forward and usually are accepted fairly well without a lot of discussion and pass. And then there's two other categories, which she says they have either done or have been forced to do in other communities, is, um, those, shall we say, whether it's a by, general bylaw amendment or a zoning bylaw amendment that has been changed substantially, and might be somewhat controversial to break that into a bucket and say, "Okay, here's an article that might have a bunch of those." And then, and maybe a third category that says, "Okay, here are some general bylaws or zoning bylaws that have been amended, but they're not real, shall we say, strong changes or controversial changes," and put those into the third bucket.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, she, she specifically mentioned one community, one, one town that they've been actually working on for four years to get what started as a recodification through.
Out of the list that we have before us, and the zoning bylaws is a question mark, maybe.
Yeah.
Um, the naming rights, well, just for people who may not have attended or followed it, uh, we did have the public hearing, um, a few days ago, uh, for the naming of, recommending the, um, naming of East Street Bridge for Mr. John Garska and, uh, naming of the future playground at Le Bree Field in honor of Matty Schmidt. And those hearings, um, happened at town hall here, and, um, uh, those were voted in favor of putting it on the warrant so that the voters can then take the next step. So, those have cleared at least that process. Okay, uh, then we're going to just rely on you to give us some media language, I guess, so that we can actually try and vote on these on...
Yes.
Thursday, okay? Anybody have any other questions or thoughts? Did somebody, anything else did, um...
On the warrant articles or any other bills?
Yeah, well, on the warrant articles in particular, no. Um, I guess one, just one from last year. Where did we ever end up with the, the extra, um, liquor license issue with Pooza's? That, did that get through the legislature?
That's, that's through. We, uh, we've, I've talked to Vicki. They're ready to move forward with it. So, that will be, uh, before the board, probably beginning of May.
Uh-huh, okay. But it went through the whole legislative process?
It went through the legislative process, yeah. Now, because it's awarded by the legislature, I got, Judy and I have to figure out, "Okay, is that a different process as far as it going in front of the select board and actually being issued?" Or, um, is it the same as a regular process for a change of license?
Okay, understood. Okay, good. All right. So, nothing more on that? Um, do we have any other business that can't wait until next meeting?
Yes.
Could I, could I just get a status update? Um, I know this was last week, and I'm not going to be here Thursday for the meeting, but percentage of likelihood of success at, in being able to get the schedule in by the April 30th deadline?
Oh, I'd say high.
Okay.
High percentage. I, actually, Bradley and I were on the phone this morning with Matt Andre. Uh, he, he has already started on the trial balance.
Okay, so that's moving along?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's moving along.
And, and is it safe to say simultaneously Bradley is, is working on whatever else needs to be done to close the books and get the free cash certified to the best that he can?
Correct. Yeah. And what, and it was interesting, because I haven't gotten into the close probably as detailed as this year, but Matt, Matt actually brought out some points, because I had actually emailed him and asked him, "Is there, is the normal sequence of these forms?" And he come back, came back and said, "All communities doing different." However, today, he said, "Yeah," he goes, "you know, some communities will file, file a Schedule A, then they'll file a trial balance. Some will file them both at the same time." But I did learn today that, okay, file, file a balance sheet uh, because that releases the free cash, and then finish the Schedule A second.
And then, so that's all moving forward, which is why you, you believe right now that we'll be able to amend the numbers on the floor at town meeting. And then, lastly, because I really, in a public session, I don't want to get into pending department head against department head. So, instead of going to them, I guess I'll just go to you. Um, can we, can we try to, what I heard at the last meeting is, "We can't move past December because this one hasn't done this, and that one says this one hasn't done that." It doesn't matter to me where, where the fingers get pointed. But can we try to get some clearance on when we're going to see January and February numbers? And I know that there's a whole list of things that need to be done. I get it. But if we could see some movement on that, I would appreciate it. If it's just not possible, then I'd like to just be told, "Listen, it's just not going to happen until this part or this part's done." I'll either accept it or I won't, but, so...
And you're speaking of the revenue numbers in particular?
Yeah, the, yeah, because it looks like the expenses are coming through, um, you know, and they're, I would say, I'm 90% comfortable with all those. It's, it's not seeing the offside, the, the revenue, you know. I know Q, um, the, uh, you know, property taxes are due again in another week or two. So, I mean, we should be, that's, that's the last quarter, right?
Correct.
But if we look at revenue, we can only see two quarters on there. So, it's, you know, it's just ease of mind, really,
Yeah.
just to start seeing these. And I know departments are short-staffed, and I get it, but we've been sitting on December 30th now for at least two months. So, it's just a concern.
Actually, probably about three weeks, because it was at December 15th.
Oh, okay.
Well, we've been in December. Christmas is done.
We're in a new year, yeah. Okay.
Do you have two questions?
Yes.
First one is capital. So, we obviously need to know what capital's recommending. When are they meeting?
Thursday at 5:00.
Thursday.
Thursday at 5:00.
Assuming they can get a quorum.
Okay. And so, by Thursday night at 6:00, we'll have what's recommended to come out of capital?
That's the intent.
Okay. And do you know, has it changed a lot? I guess it sounds like, according to Ed, that it's changed quite a bit from the form that he had originally given, given us. At least, he said fire changed a lot.
Fire changed.
The rest of them are still...
Could you just maybe send around the new list, then, Ed, if you...
When I find time to update the list, I will send it along. Yeah.
Okay, well, that's, it's all right. I don't need to have it. I just wanted to make sure that it's going to be done in time. And the other thing is the revolving funds. They have to be voted back in at town meeting.
Yep, they're on here. The, the revolving fund, shall we say, limits.
Limits.
Correct.
Now, do the committees and departments that have revolving funds know the balance of those funds right now? Because it's been held up all year. How do they even know...
I'll have to check.
...to not exceed them?
I haven't had any requests to increase the amounts, so...
Right.
We had done that just last...
We did for two departments.
For two.
Other burn permits went up a lot, and one other one did.
Right.
And actually, there's, is one that I want to take a look at that, I think, last year I was thinking that it should be increased. So, I'll take another look at that one, and if, that's my thought process, I'll bring it up to that committee.
Okay. Because I don't think the committees have had good data to go on for most of the year. So, it's hard. If I was a committee chair, I'd, I would know...
Most, most of them actually know enough to reach out to Bradley, and on an individual basis, he, uh, brings them up to date.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. If nothing else, um, our next meetings will be Thursday, the 20th, to really basically go over the warrant articles and vote on those, and also just go through whatever Bradley and Ed end up recommending in terms of the, the real final numbers on the, uh, on the override that we've been talking about tonight, and just confirming also the, the Level 1 budget that we, we approved tonight as well. And other than that, um, I would like to bring up, and I'll probably bring it up on Thursday, but we do need to decide if we really want to have this committee forum. Uh, May 24th is the date we were talking about. We still need to find some money to pay for that consultant, and, um, I'll ask Ed to get some ideas for that for Thursday's meeting, so we can make some ideas.
If, if you want them now, I'll give them to you now.
Got them in your head?
Well, no, I have, have them here.
Okay.
Uh, so, we're looking for $1,300.
Round it up, yep.
Total. The reserve fund has $550, $550 left in it. That is, uh, that is solely under the control of the Finance Committee, so. So, here's some other thoughts. Quick, uh, could take $200 from each of these following accounts: select board expenses, internet services, administrative expenses, and legal expenses. So, the eight plus the five?
And the 550 from reserve?
Right.
Okay. So, that would be...
$1,350.
Up in common choice, decision? Okay. Because I think that with that, then that would allow us to enter into some sort of an agreement with this person, uh, the consultant, W. Leningale, and then, uh, we would need to have some advanced meetings, or she would want to have, I'm pretty sure, some advanced prep meetings with some of the key department heads that would be involved. Um, so that would allow her to plug her schedule in a little bit for a few days, a couple of days before the 24th.
So, I'll make a motion to approve it, subject to the funding as outlined by the town administrator, and pending approval of FICOM of the release of $500 from the reserve fund.
550.
550.
One second.
Okay, 550.
550, okay. John and Joy, okay, thanks. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes.
That would just note, I would note for the chair, about four minutes ago, we went off the air. So, you might, you might want to re, reach out to certain constituents that are concerned about this.
Okay.
And let them know.
And we want to make sure that planning, water, and highway are there, and fire.
And fire, yeah.
And probably police.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, those, exactly. For the 24th, correct. All right. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. We're back on.
Okay, we're back on. We had a momentary hiatus, um, but I think we're about ready to adjourn. So, I'll put the motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Second.
All right. Joy and John, all those in favor?
John again?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are adjourned at 8:30. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.